2020 meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. Tonight, for our last meeting in 2020, we have Pastor Vanessa Baldwin from the Bethel AME Church provide invocation. If you would, please stand. Remain standing for the pledge. Pastor.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the honor of inviting me to ask God's Spirit to be among you this evening. I'd like to first at least offer up one verse of Scripture from Luke the second chapter, verse 10. "But the angel said to them, 'Do not be afraid; I bring you good news of great joy that will be for all the people. Let us humble our hearts and bow our heads as we approach the throne of grace.'" Holy, eternal, and all-wise God, we come before you this evening to thank you for life, a reasonable measure of health during this coronavirus pandemic, and strength for each day's journey. We ask you during this season for blessings over all the people who live and serve in With County. Lord God, we ask you during this Advent season to provide for those in need, give hope to those who have misplaced their hope, restore the joy to those who are feeling less than joyful, fill us with an overflowing of love for our neighbor during this season and beyond, and for peace that passes all understanding. Lord God, we ask that during this incarnational season in all ways, guide our county supervisors in wisdom, courage, compassion, love, kindness, and goodness as they make decisions to lead and to serve all residents throughout this county in the name of the One whose birth we celebrate. Amen.
Amen. I present the ordinance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is Citizens Time. Have two people signed up to speak. First is Ms. Linda Meyer. Ms. Meyer?
Yes, good evening, gentlemen. I have a couple of things. There's information that came to me that there are several of our senators and our representatives in the Virginia Legislature that are trying to pass a law that would eliminate our Electoral College and would put us into the National Popular Vote Interstate Pact. We really must oppose this, that it's unconstitutional, and it's an assault on the Electoral College and more broadly, our federalist and republican form of government. Here's the information. I will give it to you, and I'm hoping that you all will contact our legislators and oppose these two bills that'll be coming up again. Here's the paperwork if you will copy that. Next, of course, is our First Amendment sanctuary information that I gave you a last meeting. There are a lot of people that are very, very interested, and I'm hoping that you are, let's say, rudimenting over this and will get a leg up. We are planning to have a First and a Second Amendment rally in January, and you might be interested in how many people are coming. It's going to be quite interesting. The other thing is, several years ago, I had asked the board at that time to not have contracts for any employees. An employee should, as far as I'm concerned, you're hired, you want the job, here's the paperwork, just like everybody or most everybody. Contracts are not necessary. They only end up with all kinds of caveats that do not benefit the citizens of With County at the end, and it is not necessary. If somebody is doing the job, they are an employee, and they will stay an employee. If they don't do the job, it should be your purview to eliminate them, and if they don't want to stay here, they should be able to just leave. And these contract businesses are totally unnecessary, and it's certainly been a hindrance in other places also. The other thing is, we're hoping that you will push the school board to open our schools come January so we get all the kids back and forget about this virtual stuff. Everybody's very anxious to have our schools opened. The other thing is, last week, or whatever, I came, and I left a packet of information about the Oxford study, and, of course, the door was locked, and so I had to put it in the Dropbox. What's the big deal? We have glass in front of the ladies, who I dearly love, and I wouldn't want them to get sick. Then we've got a table in front of them, but yet you can't come in and hand anybody pertinent information or pay a bill. We've paid all kinds of money for this PPE stuff. A good portion of our employees are in cubicles here and there that don't actually get out into the public. So all this stuff about hazard pay is actually a scam because, what, 75% of the employees are not doing a hazard from their job, but they can go to Lowe's, they can go shopping, they can go all over the place, but then we're giving them additional money. And last month, of course, you allocated $113.706 from our general fund to supplement the CARES money, which is sort of a scam, and it's almost a misappropriation of funds. The taxpayers are not happy about this. It shouldn't have been done. If you wanted to split up CARES money, even if it was 25 bucks, I remember when we used to get maybe a turkey or a ham for Christmas, and that was the end of it. So if any money comes down, please do not appropriate any more With County general fund money to supplement it, to give out for supposed hazard pay when there really is no hazard. Okay, then, let's talk about the 1619 Project. I would hope that you all know about that. The National Association of Scholars is totally against that curriculum, which they're trying to promote in all the schools and in Virginia also. It is, I wrote it down here, yes, okay, 1619 Project, attempts to view all American history solely through the story of slavery, and it is very untruthful. And when you get an organization such as the National Association of Scholars saying this is just a curriculum that teaches kids to hate America, and I hope you will contact our school board and make sure that is not part of the curriculum here. Okay, one, two, three, four. Got it all. All right. Merry Christmas, you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Next on the list is Mr. Jim Ennis. Mr. Ennis?
Thank you very much, everybody. Merry Christmas. It's good to be here. I'd like to mention that I also support the First Amendment resolution. I applaud the supervisors of Campbell County for taking the bold step of declaring enough is enough. Most of us are getting tired of the shutdowns and daily threats of further shutdowns all over the country. They say, "Don't ask questions, just do what you're told." We all desire to get back to normal so jobs, businesses, and freedom of association can be restored. We've all heard of inaccurate testing of COVID screening and questionable claims about attributing deaths to the pandemic. We know the death rate to real infections is .2 or .3%, and mostly to those most sickly seniors, not children in our public schools. The elevation of fear and worry is more harmful than the threat of catching the COVID illness. Most people are frightened into complacency and consent, thinking we're in such danger and someone is watching to protect us. We oppose restrictions of social distancing, limiting gatherings to 25, no, excuse me, 10, I think it's down to 10 now, unless I've missed the latest update, and clamping down on our right to freely assemble. That's what the First Amendment's all about. Masks must be voluntary, not mandated in public places, even indoors or outdoors, and on sidewalks in some places. It's nonsense. It's crazy. So I appeal to you to take this step, to begin to restore social order in our communities and pass that resolution. Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Ennis. Thank you. So we have signed up for Citizens Time. I'll close Citizens Time. The next item on the agenda is public hearing for a proposed amendment to tangible personal In compliance with the Code of Virginia and amendments thereto, the With County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing to consider Amendment Number One to Ordinance 2014-2 Tangible Personal Property Tax Exemption Ordinance of With County, Virginia. The Board of Supervisors will hear comments from citizens concerning the proposed amendment. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, December 22, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. in the boardroom of the With County Office Building, 340 South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia. A copy of the proposed amendment is on file in the county administrator's office located 340 South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia for public review or online at www.withco.org. Have one person signed up to speak. Mr. Ron Jenkins?
Good evening, Mr. Chair Ball, Vice Chair Lawson, and honorable members of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Baer. I'm Ron Jenkins. I'm the executive director for the Virginia Loggers Association. My wife and I, Nanette, who's back there by me, live in Goochlin County, but we serve businesses such as logging businesses and mills across Virginia. It's great to be back again the second time. I just wanted to say that we're here to support your vote, to support the exemption of sales or machinery and tools taxes and personal property taxes on forest harvesting equipment as was outlined by the new state law, which gives you that option. So when I was here last, I had not really gotten to, I wasn't sure who was in the area, but since then, I've spoke with some of our members around the surrounding areas. I'm just here to tell you that they're very excited that you will vote in favor of this or that you will consider this. We hope you will. And also, I've met some folks who are not members, and we're not here tonight just to represent VLA members. We're here to represent all of the businesses, whether they are a member of the VLA or not. And we are very pleased that you would take this up. You will be the 10th county if you pass this tonight, and so we are very grateful for your time before when we met with you, and we're here tonight to say thank you again and advance of your vote. And Mr. Baer, I'd like to really just point out, thank you for your assistance as well during this time. Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Mr. Baer, do you want to summarize? I know we...
Certainly, Chairman. The, what you have for you is an amendment to a personal property tax exemption ordinance as Mr. Jenkins just said. Basically, we are just adding on to Article Number Five, restating it to include the exemption for farm machinery and implements, including farm contractors, farm utilities, et cetera, designed for planting, production, and harvesting of a single product or commodity, and it's adding the language, including forest harvesting or silvicultural activities.
Any questions on the summarization Mr. Baer provided? Here and now, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Approve.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins, for all your hard work.
I do, all of you. We appreciate it, and we wish you well. Good luck. Merry Christmas to all of you.
You too. Feel free to come back and visit.
We do love you, sir.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the payment of invoices. Entertain a motion to approve the invoices.
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions, discussion, or any invoice any member would like to pull out? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of our previous meeting from December the 8th, 2020. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second. Have a motion and a second. Any corrections, additions, or deletions? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 I forgot Mr. McCabe. Sorry. I even wrote your name on the agenda. Come on with it. In blue ink, and it still isn't. Mr. McCabe is our new emergency coordinator. Mr. Baer, I'll let you...
As I noted, I'm glad to have Jimmy McCabe on board. Mr. McCabe comes from us from far away. Committee did an interview with him virtually, and we had him come in and meet with us personally afterwards. And so, without any further ado, Mr. Baer, I'll just let you introduce yourself and board.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I really appreciate it. Really excited. I have about 1,000 irons in the fire at this point, going every which way but straight, but I'm definitely up for the challenge. It's a wonderful town, wonderful county. Family and I are just settling in just fine. So again, just thank you for the opportunity.
Well, welcome. It's a little bit different than the left coast.
I love it here.
That was my understanding, that's why I said... I heard you were navigating Main Street, Ruritri last...
Yes, yes.
In U-Haul.
I managed to get lost in Ruritri.
If helpful, Ennis, if you'll talk to the rather tall gentleman in the back, he'll then get you a cheat sheet with all the road names on it.
Well, I tried to follow how Mr. Baer took me around the county, and I wasn't even close.
I may have shared with you all, I told him that it's a small community. I said, I was crossing the street, Main Street, Ruritri, and there was a car coming towards me on Buck Street that was going very slow, and I said, "I can go across before he ever gets to the stop sign." So I turned left, and had California tags, and I said, "I bet I know who that was." I said, "Were you at Ruritri at 2:00 on Saturday?" And he's like, "Yes, sir, I was." Small tag.
California tags, they were, people were on the phone calling and...
Yeah, I'm sure.
Are you and your family settled somewhat?
Yes, sir.
I know it's, that's a big undertaking right here at the holidays with...
Yeah, it was quite the undertaking, driving from the West Coast out to here and then getting everything settled in, but we're settled in, and my wife is really enjoying the area, and so is my son.
Well, we're glad to have you. You've got an impressive resume.
Thank you, sir.
You've done a lot for somebody of, I don't want to say your age, but... Because then Coy talks about being 100, we'll be here all night. But welcome.
Thank you.
If you need anything, let us know.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, board. Thank you.
What was the position?
Emergency Management Coordinator.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to old business. Mr. Baer, do we have anything to discuss, or is that just for informational... Both items in there are from informational purposes, for the draft, procedure, meeting calendar, and the appointments. Mr. Chairman, that's all. Do you have anything else under old business? Yes, sir. Move on to reports. Ms. Gwen, I seen you sneak in.
Good evening.
How are you?
Doing well. How is everyone?
Good, great.
Okay. I don't have a lot for you tonight. We've been concentrating on trying to get work through your tax payments and things like that, so I'll kind of make it short and sweet, and unless Mr. Ball has a lot of questions, we won't be here too long for my part of the presentation, so...
Six percent.
So the November financial report was included in your board packet for tonight. So, and on, excuse me, on page two of that financial statement, you'll see that our consolidated account contained a balance of $62,602,887, and of that, the general fund balance consists of $37,372,864. Of course, November really started showing the tax payments that were coming in to our office, so you'll notice even looking at the statement of revenues on the first page of that, that our, percentage of our budget collected has increased on our current taxes and things like that. I will say, we got very much inundated with the mail. We ended up really behind by a few weeks. Two weeks ago, we started working on it, it came into us the end of October. We broke into the mail that came in in December yesterday. So we're hoping within about two weeks at the latest, because of the days out for the holidays coming up with Christmas and New Year's, within two weeks at the most, we should have everything caught up and all the mail worked. So December, you'll see another drastic change in those figures. I have not calculated out to see where we're at on collections compared to what we feel just because we've, we're just trying to get payments processed at this point. Folks are calling to check on the status of a check that they've mailed, and we're just trying to get caught up and catch our breath at the same time. So since the last meeting that I was here, the contractors have come in and put the glass up for our counter barrier, and so they finished that, actually, they came in last Monday and put that in. So Tuesday morning, before I headed out on a quick, I called it mental health time, was what I referred to, Mr. Baer, when I was off for a few days vacation, I put our microphone speaker system up, so now when folks are coming in, we actually have a microphone system and a speaker that we're communicating with them, which is helping us as far as it's cut out the noise coming in from the hallway, because we get a lot of noise from the metal detector and things like that. So we're still kind of getting our bearings on that, but so far, the counters, or the barrier, excuse me, has worked out really well. So if you have a chance to come by sometime and look at it, beforehand, everyone was coming in because it was just the metal framing, and they were wanting to know what our cleaning staff cleaned the glass with because it wasn't clean. There was no glass there, so now there's glass there. And our cleaning staff does have more to have to clean at this point, so... But that's kind of what has been happening or what is happening in the treasurer's office. We're still trying to just get payments entered in. We still have a long way to go. There's still a lot of money to get posted to accounts and to the ledger and deposited into the bank, but we're working as hard on it as we possibly can at this point, so... Any questions? Coy, you look like you want to say something.
No, I just wondered, that 800 and some thousand dollars that the Police Activity Fund has in it, is that about the right, that usually about the same amount as that?
It's a, it's a much better level.
I was going to say, I think it's higher than what it had been running. Hold on, I think Finance has something in their report that compares that.
805,530.
What item were you talking about for?
The Police Activity Fund.
It's on page...
Yeah, page 117 actually shows the chart of the Police Activity Fund.
Yeah, November's significantly higher.
It's headed in the right direction.
Actually, November's higher than it's been at least since, I don't know what year that is, July, maybe...
So it's July 17.
Yeah, 2017, it's at the top, if you read, you can find it right.
I just, I just wondered if that's about what usually stays in it, because one time it was way down there.
Yeah, it's kind of...
It had depleted down, even July and August were low months compared to, you know, going back to July of 2017, but then September, October, November, it's steadily increased.
And we did the correct entry in September for the miscalculations that had come out prior to then, so it's, you know, you look at September, and then it's obviously grown in October and November, and so...
Okay. Thank you.
Laurie, you talked about being behind on the mail. I just got one question. I paid mine in December, and it posted on my account like four days later. My name was not, my name was not on the outside of it, so I'm just curious how you knew it was mine.
Well, you had it in the payment box, and it helped that you alerted me that you had dropped it in there, because I made sure that we got that check in, and it didn't bounce.
Good point.
Before you did all of your Christmas shopping, I wanted to make sure we got your money.
No, it was funny, because last, the last meeting, you were talking about the, you know, how much you brought in, and I was like, I checked mine, I was like, well, mine posted pretty quick, you know?
Yeah, the payment box payments, we check those daily, so we were trying to get those posted the same day or next day at the latest, if we possibly could. The thing with the mail, we had a lot of, lot of phone payments, and then we still had quite a few folks coming in as well. So working the mail, a mail payment is the equivalent to you calling to make a payment or you coming into the office to make a payment, because we still have to check the same things and work at the same. We don't have any automated methods of running the mail any faster. So there were probably a period of two weeks, I don't know if we got 50 pieces of mail worked, in all honesty, but then when the mailman's coming in and he's bringing you one of those squared tubs that they have, and he's sitting it down every day, and you get about three of those three days in a row, you don't get, you don't keep up, and you don't get caught up.
I seen Rusty one day, and he had one where it was big, and I mean, it was packed full.
Right. We're, we have the, the long trays that we keep the mail in when it comes in, because we try to, as it comes in each day, just stack it in those. We are now down to, I think it's two and a half of those, but they are crammed full of payments. Like I said, we just broke into the mail that came in in December, which was end of November postmark. Some mail issues, I had questioned the mail guy one day. We all complain about mail and how it travels, and we never know if it gets there, and that is a concern with our citizens with tax payments. But December 14th, last Monday, they came in, they put the mail down, I was sorting through it, I had a stack of mail, a couple inches thick, that was postmarked December the 3rd. This was December 14th, which is on time, but my thing is, where had that mail been for 11 days? So when the mail guy that we'd been having came in, I caught him Tuesday morning before I left out, and he said, you know, "As soon as it comes from Greensboro, we start sorting it out to go out on route." He said something happened there. But 11 days was just really odd to me, really odd. But most everything seems like it's taken about two or three days to get across town, get across the county, however you want to label it, but it's, and some things, you know, take a little bit longer depending on where it's coming from. But we're getting there. We're, we're fully aware, we still have a long way to go, and there's still a whole lot more money to get posted, but by next meeting, I will have a better grasp on where we are, and of course, your December financial statement will more accurately reflect December, depending on how much of that we get worked before the end of the month and the end of the year, so we'll kind of see where we are, but I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Gwen.
Thank you. You all have a Merry Christmas. Good to see everybody. And Happy New Year, if I don't see any of you next week either.
Next item on the agenda is Buildings and Grounds Committee report.
Mr. Chairman, Building and Grounds Committee met on December 15 to make bond recommendations. Proceeding with the attached layout, option Shawna and Chief Ford, Mr. Barron, Supreme Community Center project, staff will work with Thrasher Engineering to develop cost estimates for this layout.
Coming from committee, doesn't need a second, any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I know Mr. Wright is here with Thrasher, but he has just sent us cost estimates of this, and obviously, this is just very preliminary, but I will hand those out, but...
But doing it in this location, we don't have to worry about the road, Lindsay Lane, we don't have to worry about as much of a road behind it. But rough cost estimates now, which obviously we'll have to do some final detail with it, but that's the, that's the proposed cost estimate for this layout. But this layout does work the best with the existing terrain and probably has the least cost associated with it of the other options.
That's correct.
Any other questions or discussion?
This is about double what we had originally.
Yes.
Put in.
$364,000 for a pine steel building.
Is that, is the 5,600, is that the square footage?
Yes.
That is it.
Main thing that you are doing tonight is just approving, sort of moving forward with that location, the layout on sheet number four. These are the preliminary cost estimates to go with it and obviously Buildings and Grounds and Budget Committee has some work to do on finalizing the plans, the layouts, you know, pavement, gravel, all those things in the process.
So we're not voting on this dollar amount?
Not voting on the dollar amount. This is just to approve proceeding with the, the layout options shown on there.
And I'll add too, I mean, apart from process, it'll be a bid process and it's got to have some aggressive bids, prices will go down. And we're at a, we're at a peak, at least I hope it's a peak, of material prices. But these are, these are updated for right now, none of them. If, if prices start to go down, you'll see some benefits of that. At that stage, it already goes to production. I've never seen anything go down.
I think materials gotta go down.
I hope so. I don't, I don't know about, I can't support that cost.
Any other questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Do I need to vote again?
Chairman, the next recommendation is adopting recommended camping and pool admission rates for rural retreat lakes.
Mr. Baird, you want to summarize that action?
Yeah, basically, Mr. Williams went through, knowing that we're going to have a minimum wage increase that'll be going into effect as of May 1st this year. Rates had not been revised since, since he's been here, 2014. It was a few, a couple of years before that. And he has reviewed the, I guess, competition in the area and puts forth the recommended rates that you see.
And I will say, I looked, after our committee meeting, I looked up, hungry mothers. Whew. That was a big difference there. Any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 Is that all from Buildings and Grounds? Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the Water Committee report.
The Water Committee met on December the 15th, 2020 and recommends the following. First is approved change order number three for the Ricky Road Project. This is a decrease of $2,965.
Any questions or discussion on that? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Second is accepting Peden Board's proposal to provide a PER for the Barrett Mills Road Water Project at a cost of $15,000.
Any questions or discussion on that? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 The third thing is authorizing a payment plan for the Taylor account at 187 Foxfire Road, Max Meadows, Virginia.
Any questions or discussion on that item? Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Fourth is authorizing the following accounts to be written off and closed. Do I need to read those or just?
Just those names.
As listed?
Yep.
Any questions or discussion on item number four? Do a roll call vote with Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 And the fifth and the last thing, I believe, is the adoption of the attached payment policy procedures for late payments.
Mr. Baird, you want to summarize that one?
Yeah, following also a recent discussion regarding electronic process bank checks that have been received in the mail by the Water Department that do not come with a stamped or mail postage marked date on it. The recommendation here is to add the addition, all electronic process bank checks received by mail in the Water Department by the 22nd of each month with a check date of the 10th of the month or earlier will qualify for late fee and penalty removal.
Any questions or discussion on that item? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 What was the effective date on that, Mr. Baird? I'm sorry.
Basically, I would have it effective as of January 1st.
Anything else from Water Committee? I believe that was it. Moving on to new business, excuse me. First item is consent calendar. Make motion to approve the consent calendar as presented. Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Mr. Baird, I would just note, Ms. Akers' retirement from Circuit Court, I think it'd be fitting if we...
Resolution, yes, it would be.
I don't know how many years Frankie was down there. I'd hate to guess.
Three or four.
That's a best thing for Mr. Baird.
That needs to be done, yes, sir.
Any, anybody have anything else? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item is the fiscal year 21 expenditure budget, third quarter appropriations. Entertain a motion to approve. Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Next item is a transfer request. Mr. Baird, you summarize that?
Yeah, basically, Mr. Johnson, Commonwealth Attorney, is requesting a transfer from state asset forfeiture funds in the amount of $2,129.44. Staff recommends approval of that amount.
Entertain a motion to approve. So moved. Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 Next item is with County Audit for fiscal year 2020.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Corbin Stone was already booked for another meeting and cannot attend our meeting tonight. He will be attending our first meeting in January to review the report. I just want to go ahead and provide it to you all before the end of the year and we also can start distributing this out to our agencies that require seeing our audits. So he'll be here in January to give the report.
Do we need to take any action at this time?
You, you could take action to accept it now or you can wait and do it at the January
To make a motion, we accept it. Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Just for the record, it was a...
Unqualified.
Anybody else have any questions or discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Next item is the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission Audit for the fiscal year. Provide it for your information, Mr. Chairman, and recommend accepting the Mount Rogers Audit. Entertain a motion to accept the Mount Rogers PDC Audit.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item is the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, local emergency management planning grant. Mr. Hankins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is an annual award that we compete for. It's $13,017 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. It is a one-to-one match, so we have to provide $13,000 in like-kind. We do that through salary, this pays a portion of our emergency coordinator's salary. You consider this as part of your budget, so you don't need actually to appropriate it, you just need to accept the, the award of the grant.
Entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Mr. McCabe, I'm glad we got that. We forgot to tell you about that before you moved. Do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Anything else under new business, Mr. Baird?
Just for informational purposes, Mr. Chairman, similar grant, the For Life, I know some of you have received questions from your local rescue squads about that. That funding, we've gotten notice from the state that they've reviewed our annual report and they've processed it for payment typically that's done within about a month. So we should be seeing those funds in January.
Did you tell Mr. McCabe that was part of his job that you were covering while he was driving?
He owes me a couple of beers that we haven't talked about.
You have anything else under new business, Mr. Baird?
No, sir.
Anything else, Mr. Hankins?
No, sir.
Speaking of rescue squads, the delivery on the, the new squads, I know you emailed the retreat, is there, do you have a timeframe on that or?
We were trying to get to early next week, but Lead Mine says they have a vehicle down, so they, they would appreciate an earlier delivery if they can get it. I'll work with Mr. Vest and see what we can do. The earliest would be tomorrow if they're not booked up. Martha has added both vehicles to the county insurance, so we're interested.
Yeah, and that was my next question. I'll make sure that happens. And next item on the agenda, staff reports, COVID-19 update.
The only thing, God, Matt's been giving you all the updates on the numbers on it. We are trying to get the numbers from the testing. We have not heard anything yet on it unless you heard something today.
They indicated yesterday that some of the numbers that we're getting are a result of the National Guard testing, but that it would probably be today or tomorrow before we see those. We only saw, I think it was 14 cases today, so I doubt that there was much that came out of the National Guard testing with that.
And while we're on the topic, I, I just want to say thank you for what you've done in correcting their numbers and the way you put it out there with the percentages. I don't know that, I don't know if we can be anymore, I don't want to say honest, but clear with, with the information than what we are getting it from somebody else.
But we may not be 100% real close.
I know that takes a lot of time to go through and check addresses and all that, but I've had a lot of people reach out and say they appreciate the way you put that together.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Next item is County Administrator Report.
First item, request you all approve the Personnel Policy Holiday Update to accept the revisions for the holidays next year.
Entertain a motion to approve. Schedule is presented by Mr. Baird.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, next item is CARES Act. First of all, there's a current summary that was as of last Friday, Thursday, Friday, that's in your package. I handed one out in front of you. It shows the numbers as of yesterday afternoon. And obviously, these are continuing to change as departments are turning in what their final expenses are, you know, if they're under budget and what they will propose, their, those numbers are coming off. Ms. Woods in the Finance Department is continually updating this. As you know, we have all been pushing to hit a deadline of December 30th, 2020 for all of our CARES Act expenditures. With the passing of the Congress last night of the latest stimulus package, there is a caveat in there that none of us have got all the details. VACO has sent us information, Senator Peetian's office has sent us information, that basically it extends the CARES deadline until December 31st, 2021. So it's a little late to make any major changes, but we're not up against the gun of, of everything on the December 30th date, which helps out with some of the items that may be coming in late or we've been having issues with. Would love to have had that information three or four months ago, that would have helped us with, with changing some of our plans and maybe some more long-term plans on broadband or things may have been feasible for us to have in place. But anyway, that's the current status. You have two requests that are in the package that I recommend approval of. One of those is for the IT department for the servers and the exec, the other one is for the Buildings and Grounds for the Juvenile Clerks Office.
Entertain a motion to approve the, can we do, do we need to do both together, Mr. Chairman, to be fine? Entertain a motion to approve the CARES Act request is presented by Mr. Baird.
So moved.
Is this what you were asking?
No, no, no.
This is on page 350.
This is the IT servers and the Juvenile Domestic Relations Court stuff. That's all.
350 and 351.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, have a second? Any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Next item, Mr. Chairman, is the last round of the, it's Block 7 for the Open for Business Recovery Grant that we have provided the funding to the JIDA, the $600,000. You can see they have five businesses left there. They draw down the final $35,000 and pay out entirely the, the full amount that we provided to them. Recommend approval of the Block 7 of the Open for Business Recovery Grant.
Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Last item, Mr. Chairman, I emailed you all today. The JIDA Assistant with the Nonprofit Assistant Grant, these are all of the applicants that they have received. Mr. Matthews, I thought I saw him come in back there. If there's any questions anybody has on these. Obviously, with the additional time that allows us time, if there's any of these that you all would like to pull off or consider at a later time or discuss more in detail, we could certainly do that.
I mean, the one question I got is the, the ones from the town. The town got their own CARES Act money. That, that's a question for me.
I've got the same question.
Town couldn't do that.
And we could pull those off and see if they were able to get money from, from the town on that or what they've got from the town.
I, I think several of us have questions on several of these. I'm not saying they don't need it. For me, I think I need some justification, so I think we're going to pull some of these off and if you'll forward us whatever information applications they have. and if you'll forward us whatever information applications they have. And do you want to just do the fire departments and rescue squads and... I think we had a few churches.
You want to just go down the list, Mr. Chairman, if somebody wants to pull one of them off, we'll just pull that off?
That's fine. That's probably easier. Trying to read everybody's mind. Agape Food Pantries, anybody want to?
Well, I was, you know, not necessarily pull it off, but I guess I don't have a good understanding of what the CARES money is for. And when here they're talking about replacing a freezer, how is that COVID-related?
We'll pull that off.
Well, I'll do my best to answer any questions you've got. And I've got applications here in front of me if you want to dive into any of them or we can save them for a later date. Most of their food, most of the food that's being provided to the pantries now has moved from shelf-storage safe foods, because they can't get a hold of them, to fresh frozen foods. And so that's requiring them to have to keep everything frozen when it comes to them. And they've spent, I think, fifteen thousand over the last six years trying to maintain that freezer that's forty years old, which is why they're interested in being able to use this funding to help pay for that along with some of the food costs they have.
And I don't have a problem with that if it fits within the CARES. I mean, you know, I don't know, my understanding is opposite of what they've lost because of COVID. And, you know, I question how a freezer has anything to do with lost COVID. I'm not going to do it. I want to make sure the room is clean.
Well, that's why I think we can just pull them off and get their applications and look at it. I mean, like Mr. Bayer said, we got time now. So you want to pull that one off, Mr. Cook?
Yeah.
Banner Springs Fire Department, anybody want to pull that one? Rock Hughes Medical Center, anybody want to pull that one to look at? Family Resource Center. Hope Pacts. Hope Incorporated. Landmines Rescue. Max Midda's Fire Department. Open Door Cafe. Presbyterian Children's Home. Retreat Emergency Service. With Refuge and Mercy House.
I did have a question regarding that one. The assistance with the mortgage payment, that's in line with... Okay. Thank you.
Is everybody good with that one?
Yeah.
Westfield Farmers Market. Downtown Westfield.
Yes, sir.
Pull that one. Edith Bowlin Wilson Museum, yeah, I want to pull that one. Galena Presbyterian Church. Holy Trinity Lutheran Church. Retreat Depot Foundation. Virginia Cooperative Extension, I want to pull that one.
Me too, Mr. Chairman.
With Arts Council.
Yes, sir.
Westfield Church of God of Prophecy, the Jackson Chapel. Westfield, Westland Chamber of Commerce. Boy Scouts of America. Southwest 4-H Center. I want to pull that one. Young Life of West County.
Yes.
Pull that one.
Yes.
Westland Young Professionals, yes.
Wait a minute. Don't, yeah, Westland Young Professionals, yes. And I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was one ahead of Young Life. I don't have a problem with that one. I apologize. So that's my mistake. I'm sorry.
Does anybody else have one to look at? Young Life, I guess we'll pull it. And Wile Khan.
Mr. Terry, did you want to pull Westland Young Professionals off?
Yes, please. And if...
Sir, is that one with Wile Khan?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And if you can get those applications to Mr. Bayer, he can scan them and email them out to us. Do you want to look at that through Budget Committee or?
We have Budget Committee coming up there early January. We could do it at that if y'all would like to do it that way. Okay?
So the ones that we didn't pull, we're comfortable with the suggested award. Those over to the side to go ahead and...
Sorry, what was that?
The ones that we didn't pull were comfortable to go ahead and do performance agreements and cut checks for the suggested column.
Yeah, we'll have to vote on that.
Need a vote on it, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, his question was, you know, we'd sort of set seventy-five hundred, but he's moved them up to spread it out and those meeting the needs we were both looking at. So as long, and I think what y'all are saying, y'all agree with the suggested awards on those amounts.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, I don't.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend for approval of the block as approved for tonight's action.
Entertain a motion to approve the ones that we blocked in.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any question or discussion? Here and now we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
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 All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
John, I appreciate your work with that. That was a quick turnaround and appreciate your work getting the word out as quickly as good.
Thanks.
Anything else under county administrator report, Mr. Bayer?
No, sir. I do not have anything unless Mr. Hankins says anything else.
County Attorney, Mr. Farley.
I do not have anything to report at this time.
Yes, you do.
Oh, I do. Branch Botanicals had agreed to transfer the lot, Lot 20, back to the JIDA. So Branch Botanicals, that's better, agreed to transfer Lot 20 back to the county through the JIDA because it went through them to get to it. And we, I'd emailed a form to Branch actually early this morning for them to review so they can sign it. There were actually two deeds of trust on that lot. One was for the purchase price, the second, and that was to the JIDA. The second deed of trust or lien was for the 87-5 Westville Opportunity Fund Grant. Branch paid that grant back. I had forgotten that that lien was on that lot. We also had another lien on Mr. Tully's individual land, which was already released. So this is actually on our Progress Park lot that's coming back to us, and this just needs to be released. So we're looking for a motion to authorize Mr. Bayer to sign that release because that 87-5 was paid back to the county.
Entertain a motion to authorize Mr. Bayer to sign the necessary documents to release that lien.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second. Any questions or discussions? Here and now we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have now, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bayer, does Mr. Farley give anything else?
No, sir. Not that I'm aware of.
Move on to Board Supervisors' time, District 2, West Earth. I'm looking at this, Mr. Smith, I'm sorry.
I got a couple of things. One thing is, I know Mr. and Ms. Ennis is here. They were having issues. They still have issues. They're not... The issues are still there with some erosion where a creek comes back into the road and then turns back down the side of the road. Mr. Ennis was reaching out to see if we could relocate the creek back to the original creek bed. We spoke with the county engineer. They said the landowner could do what they want to do. They reached out to some folks, some excavating companies come out, or a gentleman with a backhoe, and he said he wouldn't do it because of the EPA. I went down and looked at it. I sent Mr. Fowler and Mr. Bayer some information on that. Mr. Fowler did send the whole history about Connors Valley Road, which I'll get with Mr. Ennis and Mr. Milstead and them as well to kind of talk through it. But in the meantime, Mr. Ennis has also reached out to the EPA folks, I think it is.
DEQ?
DEQ, and they are talking about bringing the Corps of Engineers and Army Corps of Engineers in for that particular area. So I just want to make sure I keep it in front of everybody that, you know, these folks are facing the issue down there that we need to get taken care of. The road where they build up, the 750 feet of that road, it's really holding up well, but this right here is causing an issue. It's a safety issue, especially the school buses going up down that road and residents. If somebody hits it, they're going to flip right off that bank. So we're trying to get that taken care of as quick as possible. The other thing Mr. Hankins had mentioned, Lead Mines is down a truck. And I think it's the emphasis number nine is back down again. They're having problems with that unit. So we really need to get them off truck there. So I know Mr. Hankins is aware of that and everybody on the fire and rescue, so that's all I have.
Don't say that too loud because we'll eventually put that thing up for sale.
Can I say something now? I don't think they got anybody down there that knows how to check the oil in one, check the water in one. I think that's the whole problem. They just go jump in it and fire it up whether it's got water, oil, anything else in it. Ain't nothing going to last. You give them that new one, the same thing's going to happen to you. They need to put somebody in charge of that and make sure them things got oil and got water in them.
Because this is the unit that we've spent a lot of money on to get it repaired.
With what Mr. McRoberts said, Mr. Bayer, they need to be pre-tripping these vehicles every shift. You know, I mentioned it when we first had problems with it. It was awful low mileage coming to be having the problems that we're having. So if you can get with Mr. Jackson.
They go, excuse me, they go back number nine up to the schoolhouse and back. And the man went out there and he had a water hose. He poured it on the hood. He said, "What are you doing?" He said, "I'm trying to cool it off." Now, that's the kind of people that you got running that thing down there that you got over checking them vehicles. That won't last. Nothing.
Anything else, Mr.?
No, sir. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cook?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lawson?
Nothing at this time.
We're going to do that.
Did you, I was going to add to other, but I can do it now. I would like to make a motion to give the staff half a day off tomorrow. Mr. Bayer, is that doable?
Yes, I'm sure it's doable. We can get the word out immediately. Yes, ma'am.
And I don't know if this needs to be a separate motion or not, but I'd also like to do the same but for the full day of the 31st. I'll make that motion.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Mr. Bayer, that is following the Supreme Court.
Yes, sir, it is.
Our normal policy. Any other questions or discussion? Here and now we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 Anything else, Ms. Lawson?
That's all. Thank you.
Mr. McRoberts?
I have one question. What about the house beside of the storeroom, Pope Cape? Has anything been done to eliminate that problem?
I'm sorry, would you repeat?
The trash beside...
Oh, the, I know you probably are talking about, I will follow up on that and see. I know they were working on that. It is a messy area.
Okay. I seen Mr. Ogulda, and I asked him that, and he said that they had been down there and looked at it and checked it, but he didn't know what had been done.
I will follow up on that and let you know, Mr. McRoberts.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else, Mr. McRoberts?
No, I'm done.
Mr. Horny?
I had two questions. I think Stephen can answer them. Six-year plan, yes. Is Pope Road on it? Yes. I wish somebody'd tell VDOT that. The, what's the name of the church you used to go to, Gus? The road that goes out beside of it?
Edgewood.
Edgewood. Is that road on the six-year plan also? I was thinking it was.
I don't, I don't, it was seen now.
I thought Pope Road was supposed to be done by the end of this year.
That's what I thought, but I talked to some people that was looking at buying land down that way, and they talked to VDOT about, because they was going to have to build fence. They wanted to know if that road was going to be paved anytime soon, and VDOT told them no. I said, "Well, somebody needs to tell VDOT what they're doing."
I'll do a follow-up with Mr. Fowler and see what the timeframe is on Pope Road.
I thought they'd started some work down there. Did they not?
I think they, that's what I was thinking, was they've done some preliminary work down there.
And what was the other one you asked about? Edgewood?
I don't have to have an answer now. Just let me know later.
Well, I'm looking real quick here. It'd have been one of the last ones we added. I'll double-check it when I do not see it on my list right now.
Mr. Bayer, will you copy me in the email on Pope Road? Mr. Cox has been up here so much. I know it's not my district, but I feel like I got a vested interest in... I actually talked about him the other day. We hadn't seen him in a while, but it was my understanding. And I think Mr. Fowler promised him that it'd be done by the end of this year, so that...
Well, I mean, I can understand. The weather's probably gotten on behind, but, you know, weather's messed up a lot of stuff this year.
I just got the 21 plan, and I do not see Edgewood on there. I will double-check with more time tomorrow, but I do not think it's on there.
Anything else, Mr. Horny?
I believe that was it.
Mr. Terry?
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman. I spoke with Mr. Bayer earlier today. Apparently, the recycling center, trash center out on 52 towards Stony Fort had a disaster over the weekend. They didn't pick up their trash. The buckets didn't get empty. So the attendants out there are telling folks to climb the ladders and throw their trash on top of the big bins. I had multiple phone calls about that, so Mr. Bayer is making the appropriate phone calls to reach out. So that's just in case any of you other folks get any calls about that. But outside of that, Merry Christmas to everyone.
I fought that battle myself. It's not appropriate. It's not safe. In the interest of Christmas, given the couple days, I won't get started. I don't have anything. I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and appreciate everything y'all have done this year. We've made some progress. We've agreed, we've disagreed, but we've been respectful. That's always appreciated, and the three new members. I hope 2021 is not like your first year. I think we all hope that 2021 is better, but if you get a fireworks complaint on New Year's Eve, I'll take the summons because I'm probably going to fire something up at 12:01.
I need to send something out to my house, too, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. McRoberts.
We have a wonderful lady at Old Shear. She made me a birthday cake for my 44th birthday. It's back around the table for if you want some of it. Help yourself. And I would like to say publicly, thank you, Ms. Cummins. You're a wonderful person, and the cake was good.
She made it for your 44th. It's awful stale.
Oh, that would be here like mine.
I was trying to give a heartfelt Merry Christmas, and then I, I don't have anything to match yet. People expect it from me when Sergeant Duke comes down to Westfield, we don't see it coming.
Mr. Chairman, if I would, I'd, I'd like to, one, express appreciation to the board for everything. It has been a, a obviously long and challenging year. Appreciate to all y'all have done to help out staff, and I'm sure staff will greatly appreciate the, uh, the additional time off and matching with the, uh, the courts on the, the time off. Uh, but also, just to single out, I would say I express appreciation for Ms. Lawson. She promoted a decorating the door contest. It really got everybody here just a little bit of something to do and excited, and there were some neat door designs. If, uh, before you leave, if anybody wants to walk through anywhere, let me know. Uh, Mr. Hankins did a wonderful recreation of the, uh, Charlie Brown Christmas scene at the very end on his door. Uh, there were, uh, several of them. I, my only complaint was one of the doors covered the window that I could see out. And the funny thing was, the note they put on it was, "Do you see what I see?" And I'm like, "No, you covered the window." So, uh, but, uh, thank you and, uh.
You're welcome. And thank you all, and thank you, Martha, for everyone's help.
And I do appreciate nobody putting Ms. Bauer's door. I was, kept looking at that screen because I was waiting on that one to pop up. Um, does anybody else have anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion to recess until January 5th, 2021 at 5:00 PM.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in recess.
See you next year.
See you next year.